Good evening. Good evening. I'm Anne Hartline of the League of Women Voters of Humboldt County. Candidate forums are on Zoom this year because of the pandemic. All candidates for our forum received Zoom invitations and pass codes to their specific forums a few days in advance. League members will host, moderate, and tie the forums. Let's see. Only these league members and the candidates themselves will be present in our Zoom sessions. No additional participants will be allowed. A brief caveat. This Zoom format is new to all of us at the League of Women Voters of Humboldt County. Anyone who has participated in digital events over the last five months knows inevitably there will be technical glitches and rough spots during the forum. Often, these glitches are based entirely on an individual's physical location or internet service. We urge candidates and viewers to be patient and understanding. If someone's screen freezes, a speaker's words come out strangely, a participant gets bumped out and has to rejoin, et cetera. Kindness and a sense of humor are essential here. This forum is being recorded and will be aired for anyone to view on Access Humboldt, YouTube, and our Facebook page. Links to the recorded forums and schedules will be advertised and made available to the public by the league. This video recording is the property of the League of Women Voters of Humboldt County. The link to the video may be shared, but no portion of this video may be used for promotional or advertising purposes by candidates or organizations. Tonight, the league presents four election to the Eureka City Council. Candidates for Ward Two are Lucinda Jackson, Katie Molton, Tamar Shirley, who is not present, and Dot Yeager. Candidates for Ward Four are Scott Bauer, Eddie Morgan, Matthew Owen, William Tuttle, and Liza Welsh. William Tuttle is here. Excellent. We see you now, William. The League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan organization, encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The league is dedicated to providing impartial information to voters about candidates and the political process in order to help them make informed decisions. This is part of our citizen education program. The purpose of a candidate meeting is to give citizens an opportunity to hear the candidates' views on a variety of issues. The League of Women Voters does not endorse candidates or political parties. So we will begin now with opening statements. And the order of opening statements and the order of each subsequent question has been randomly drawn. So for opening statements, we are Lucinda Jackson. We would like to have your opening statement, please.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to visit with you today. I am running for the Eureka City Council because I've lived in Eureka for 40 years and I've seen how the deterioration has happened in that time. Truly, it breaks my heart. And if there are skills or abilities that I have that can improve the quality of life for each of its citizens, I feel it's my obligation that I participate and do my part. I've been a public servant with the County of Humboldt since 2006, starting with the Community Development Services Department, moving on to the Auditor Controller's Office, and now currently work in the Humboldt County Office of Elections. In that time, I've gotten to see how the county functions through the government framework as well as my years in the private sector, working in the legal field. Those skills combined and that education combined give me a unique perspective on how government and did I lose my time?
Thank you. Katie Molton, we'll have your opening statement next, please.
Hi there. My name is Katie Molton. I am running for city council for Ward Two. The last 15 years, I have worked in local, I've served this community. I've worked in local nonprofits, both small and large, and I have seen firsthand the potential and the amazing energy in our town. As a mentor for at-risk youth, I have put real job opportunities in front of at-risk kids, including working with folks in juvenile hall. As a community arts event coordinator, I have brought tens of thousands of people and millions of dollars into the area. Eureka is an awesome and unique little town, and we need to keep what is really good about it and serve all of the people of Eureka with compassion to create a safer and stronger Eureka for all of us.
Thank you. Dot Yeager, your opening statement, please.
Hi, my name is Dot Yeager. I'm running for city council because I agree with, I'm sorry, I forgot the last person that was up there. What was the girl's? Katie Mol. Oh, yeah, Katie Mol. I agree with her. This is a wonderful town. I've lived here my entire 62 years. I used to run a grocery store, pass market for 28. I've got extensive extensive knowledge in the retail and wholesale business. Oh, my time's almost up. So that's pretty much why I'm running for city because our area is very much heavy crime. I want police here.
Thank you. Scott Bauer will have your opening statement, please. You need to unmute.
All right. Hello, my name is Scott Bauer, and it would be my honor to serve the fourth ward and the entire community on the Eureka City Council. For over 25 years, I've worked to protect and conserve California's natural resources as a state civil servant. Throughout that time, I have served on various advisory boards and committees to better our community. We must all work together to improve our city. It will take hard work, mature leadership, and experience that will have a prosperous future for this place we love. I hope you will support me for Eureka City Council to invest in Eureka's infrastructure, such as roads and gulch trails, work to make our community more inclusive and diverse, build affordable housing, create living wage jobs, and support small businesses, which are the backbone of our local economy. Let's keep this work together to keep moving Eureka forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Eddie Morgan, we'd like to hear your opening statement, please.
My name is Eddie Morgan. I've lived here in Eureka for 22 years, and I've been married with Sue McIntyre, my wife, for 24 years. I've served in the military reserve and active army for over 20 years, during which time I was deployed overseas four times. My last deployment ending in 2015. Sue and I own a brick and mortar business in Old Town Eureka purchased in 2014. In 2016, I served on the Humboldt County Civil Grand Jury for a year. I've served on the Humboldt County Civil Human Rights Commission for the past two years. I'm still serving. I'm on the Eureka Energy Commission, and recently I've been selected on the County Measure C Advisory Committee. I believe strongly that every generation's responsibility is to leave the next generation with a better place to live, be it environmentally, fiscally, safety, and justice for all people. I believe I have the skills to assist the city of Eureka in this effort, and if given the opportunity, I would honor and serve the people of the city of Eureka.
Thank you. Matthew Owen, your opening statement, please.
Hi, I'm Matthew Owen, and I'm running for Eureka City Council in the fourth ward. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this event tonight because I believe there's nothing more important than an informed electorate. I'd also like to thank you, the voters who are actually watching this, so you get to know the candidates and the issues. I was born and raised in Eureka. I'm a graduate of Eureka High School, like my mother before me and my daughter after me. I then graduated Chico State in three and a half years before transferring to San Francisco, Sacramento, and down to the Pasadena area, where I served in the Tournament of Roses for 20 years now. That's the little group that puts together the Rose Parade and Rose Bowl Game. Unfortunately, we're not having it this year, so I'll have to look for it in 2022. I've been a member of the Rotary Club for the last 20 years, including serving as president, and I've also been a board member with the Sequoia Park Zoo Foundation, where I'm proud to announce that you'll be walking through the redwoods 100 feet high in a few short months. Thank you for watching our event tonight.
Thank you. Liza Welsh, we'd love to hear your opening statement, please.
Hi, I'm Liza Welsh. I'm running to represent the fourth ward on the Eureka City Council. I am a land use planner with the County of Humboldt, and I hold a master's degree in public policy from Mills College. Public policy encompasses studies of urban and regional planning, politics, and policy analysis. I'm also a member of various local groups, such as the Humboldt Amateur Radio Club, the Humboldt Homebrewer Society, Cooperation Humboldt, and the Eureka Heritage Society. I am endorsed by the Humboldt Del Norte Central Labor Council, the Humboldt Democratic Central Committee, the Humboldt Progressive Democrats, my own union, which is AFSMI Local 1684, the North Coast People's Alliance, and the current incumbent. I am running because I want to see a just and sustainable economic recovery from COVID-19, and I want it to be a recovery that will not leave working people behind. Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you. And William Tuttle, we would love to hear your opening statement, please. You'll need to unmute. There he is. Are we able to, I see he's muted. William, we'll wait if, I mean, let's see if he can get back in. Okay.
Are you, can you hear me?
William, yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, and we can't see you, but it's okay. We can hear you. Go for it.
Sorry, my name is William Tuttle. I'm running for the fourth ward for the city council. I moved to Eureka when I was five. I lived here most of my life. I graduated Eureka High in 1964. I spent 26 years in the Marine Corps as an officer. And upon my retirement, I came home to help with my mother's restaurant and take care of my father. Since that time, I've been a restaurant owner for 20 years. I've owned four other businesses. I happen to have a lot of business background, a lot of dealing with problem solving. I work with the area Toys for Tots program for the last eight to 10 years, serving over 6,000 kids. We are in the process of getting that going now. I would love to represent the fourth ward in the city council. I think I have a lot of background and a lot of business experience that would come in handy to lead us through this time coming up ahead.
Say, feel free to, we can hear you, and if it's difficult to get both your vision and your sound, you can certainly participate with just your voice. Okay, so we will move. You're very welcome. We will question and answer portion of our forum. As I mentioned earlier, each candidate will be given one minute to respond to the question. And our first question, and we will begin with Scott Bauer. Our first question is, how do you feel the city of Eureka has done in dealing with ongoing problems of homelessness and poverty? What changes would you make?
Oh, that's one of the biggest issues we face, you know. I think the city's done a great job trying to develop more housing, like mother-law units, you know, but I think we have to do more. I think we need to really focus on getting houses that are, we have derelict houses that are boarded up all over the city. We need to hold people accountable. If they can't manage their property and provide a house, you know, there's houses just sitting there waiting for people who would take care of them. I think there's an opportunity to develop housing there. Poverty is a bigger issue that faces the nation. You know, Eureka is just one of, you know, one city in 100 that faces extreme poverty. And that requires us to get jobs, you know, living wage jobs. And I think the city does do a good job of really trying to get more businesses here, but we need to protect the small businesses that we have. We need to keep those going through this pandemic. We need to make sure that our industries, our bigger industries are maintained, our commercial fishing. I think our recreational fishing is an industry that we really haven't pushed all that much.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll move on. Matthew Owen, we would love to hear your response to this question, please.
Thank you very much. One of the main reasons I'm running for city council is housing. Four years ago, I met with some department heads to talk about what their ideas were for planning for additional housing. And I don't know if you know this, but the largest owner of vacant lots in the city of Eureka is the city of Eureka. I've been going through downtown and Old Town where there's probably 20, 30 lots. Many of these are parking lots, but some of these parking lots are very busy, while others have very few cars in them. My plan is to convert these little used parking lots into apartments. We desperately need additional housing. Also, we need to streamline the process to getting permits for auxiliary dwelling units, where anybody can be a landlord if you put a unit behind your house. And I'm going to help the city by converting a lot of our old shanty hotels into housing for people in need. And those are probably three biggest things. We just need additional housing. The city has lots. Let's figure out a way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Eddie Morgan, what is your perspective on this issue, please?
You sure chose a very difficult one for Eureka and the state of California. I think it boils down to, first of all, I think the city has done a lot of steps in the right direction. They've done work with the community service, working with the police, like Officer Christensen. And so there's many sides of it. There's getting jobs and getting people together and getting to the root issue of it. So there's not one root issue to it. The root issue is jobs, housing, and people that need help. And we need to have a diverse, dynamic solution for that. So it's a lot of different solutions. Having counselors on the streets, which is happening, will help. Having a good healthcare system will help, having more help, having more housing, such as the one that we talked about in those vacant lots, which the city is already working on, and getting all the different groups, because there are a lot of different groups working on it. And sometimes I feel we could maybe work better together. And that would be one of the things I would bring to the table, is trying to get a concise effort where we don't have multiple organizations doing their own thing, which is good, but also working more together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. William Tuttle, we would love to hear your comments on this.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we can.
In my 70 years I've lived in Eureka, the size of Eureka has not grown very much. And the problem is it stagnates. We need more business, and the more business brings more jobs. And this provides more housing for people. I mean, people cannot build houses if they don't have money. They can't rent houses if they don't have jobs. And we have a very high cost of rent, very high cost of housing compared to our income level. It's all mostly blue collar. So we need to provide more homes, but we need to provide the jobs for these people that can rent these homes and then make it so that people can make affordable housing available in Eureka, because there's not much affordable housing around. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucinda Jackson, your comments, please. Did we lose her? We did. We lost Lucinda. Okay. Maybe she'll be able to come back in.
She dropped off once before. She comes right back in, so.
Okay, all right. I'll go, Dot Yeager, we'd love to hear your comments, please.
Okay. Every city council person who is or has run for this office always talks about the homeless, and nothing ever changes. So I feel we need to get back to the Housing First Initiative, which we already have in place. And, excuse me, and we need, we need, I'm sorry, I can't see. I'm greater look at Betty Chin's success she's had because she knows what she's doing and is doing a great job. The Salvation Army is doing a great job. The Rescue Mission does a great job. And the vets have a shelter and a group called the AHA. The county also has the Serenity Inn, and the city just applied for a grant to purchase the Pine Cove for transitional homelessness. So I think we've done a lot for the homeless in Eureka.
Thank you. Liza Welsh, we'd love to hear your comments, please.
Thank you. Yeah, this is an issue that weighs heavily on me. I have three generations of family here in Humboldt County, including three generations of teachers and working-class union people. But unfortunately, recently, I have had a lot of friends and family leave the area because they couldn't find the housing or the jobs or the healthcare that they needed in order to stay here, and I don't want to see that happen anymore. So like some of the other folks who have spoke, I think that we need to look at infill development. I too support converting empty parking lots to housing. I support looking at why housing is being held vacant and doing something to intervene in that. And I also think that we need to diversify our economy. We need living wage and union jobs. The fact is that most jobs here, especially jobs for young people, don't pay enough to afford housing.
Thank you. Katie Molton, we'd love to deal with on this issue, please.
I'd like to address real quick the complexity of the problem of homelessness. There's being homeless, there's being houseless, there's being underhoused. While doing infill development and helping with affordable housing and protecting renters' rights will help the people who are able to house themselves, should they be given the opportunity. The picture on the street is far more complicated. I was a community health outreach worker for over three years with the Raven Project, and I've seen firsthand who it is that is on the streets. And yes, mental health problems and physical disabilities and drug addictions are a big part of the picture, but in that picture are also LGBTQ youth who have been driven out of their homes, families who are living in a car because they were one paycheck away and something terrible happened. People of all races and crees traveling up and down the coast looking for work. What the city is doing right now with the minimal funds is coordinating the efforts of existing agencies. I think that that is a really excellent idea. There's a lot of great work being done in our community and that we can build on that into the future. Even though it was enacted for as a response to the COVID crisis, I think that we can build on that and keep that going into the future.
Thank you. Lucinda, we're glad to see you back. Did you get a chance to hear the question?
The question that I heard is how do you feel about the city of Eureka with homelessness and poverty?
Poverty, yes. If you'd like to comment on that, that would be wonderful.
I agree with the, my fellow candidates, that homelessness is a very serious issue facing Eureka. We were basically plagued by homelessness, and I'm not sure if other folks have addressed this. I lost connection, but a lot of it is due to drug addiction and mental illness, and we're feeding that problem. We're not helping it. We need to find real solutions to serve people, not just put them in a house, but actually give them a home. A home is where you identify, where you find your purpose and your place in community. And we need to address this with mind, body, and spirit, not just put up money for housing. So if I'm elected to city council, my goal will be to help people find a home and be able to be a part, an active part of our community once again.
Thank you. All right, we'll move now to question two. Eddie Morgan, you'll be the first respondent to this question. Question two is, discuss the plans that are underway for addressing the impact of sea level rise on Eureka.
To be honest, I have not studied that particular level. I do know that, I believe in the science and the fact that we are going to have these challenges. I believe that the different commissions have done studies on it, but I don't want to belabor and talk about something I don't know that much about. So I will leave it at that.
Thank you. Scott Bauer, we'd love to hear your thoughts on this.
Yeah, sea level rise is one of the biggest issues facing the world. And lucky for us, Humboldt County has really been at the forefront of looking at the issue, you know, mapping sea level rise around the bay, Alderaan Laird. You know, mapped infrastructure, and infrastructure around the bay is in a total state of disrepair. So we've got a lot of work to do to protect our roads, protect our farmlands. All of our dykes are built in the 1800s. I know the city is looking at, you know, a plan to assess what it means for our infrastructure, how we're going to address that in the future. It's something that I think about every day in my current job. And I need, I want the city to be a leader in addressing the issue and planning for it because it's coming and it's real. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Molton, we'd love to hear your thoughts, please.
Hi there. I think that the best thing that Eureka can be doing is setting an example. It's easy to look at the local picture and think that we're just talking about some small potatoes down here. But if we can restore wetlands, if we can build up our infrastructure, especially around the 101 corridor, if we can address the physical problems of sea level rise and our own energy consumption and our own contribution to that problem, even on the small city level, we can act as an example, not only for the state and the country, but for the world. We can show what somebody can do, what a city can do with a thoughtful approach that takes into account the natural systems that can mitigate things like flooding. And we can, as a city and as a people, act in a way that does not increase or exacerbate sea level rise or global warming. I also believe in science and would listen to the science and the experts.
Thank you. Lucinda Jackson, your thoughts on this issue, please?
To be told, I don't know as much about sea level rise as it relates to infrastructure as I would like to, to be able to eloquently and fully answer this question. What I can speak to is that Eureka's infrastructure is very over, it's overtaxed. It's very taxed. We have an older infrastructure system, and we have county efforts that have been made to improve and sustain as best possible. And what we need to do at this point is to really go back to the drawing board and do a real appraisal of what our infrastructure is, what the major issues and benefits of it are, and how can we really address those pieces that need to be fixed? And then we can work together as a community, funding and working towards creating an infrastructure that is sustainable, not just in the short term, but financially able to be maintained over time.
Thank you. Liza Welsh, we'd love to hear your thoughts, please.
Yeah, this is an important issue, so thank you for bringing it to the table. I believe that climate justice is a social justice issue because the changing climate we're seeing all over the world is affecting already marginalized people the first and the most severely. And I think we have a responsibility to intervene for ourselves and for the coming generations. I know that 100-year flood events are becoming more severe, and with a rising sea, a 100-year flood will be that much more detrimental to us. So I agree completely that we need to restore our wetlands. And, you know, we need to look at our storm drains and sewer systems and see if they have the capacity to handle these flood events, which are going to be more and more frequent unless we act now.
Thank you. Matthew Owen, we'd love to hear your views, please.
Well, I'm not a scientist. I'm a finance guy. I'm going to say similar to other people. I'd be relying heavily on the experts here. I can't say we're a coastal city. We have a bay around us. We're also in a heavy rain zone, so if anyone remembers December 2005, when the 101 freeway almost flooded between Eureka and Arcata, stuff like that could stop Eureka from having transportation coming in and out with their goods. So we definitely need to work with the experts here on this. I would give anything to work with the county and the state and probably the federal government. We're going to have to work together hand in hand on all this and have them tell us what's needed to do to protect our bay, especially from a rising sea level. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And Dot Yeager, we'd love to hear from you, please.
Well, I don't really have... I don't really think the sea level is in the city. The bay is exactly like it was 62 years ago, when I went down there fishing and everything. So I really don't think we need to look at the sea level when it's 80 years away from us. I think the government needs to take care of everything. And that's just what I think. I just don't think it's a thing we should be concerned about right at the moment. We have greater issues that we need to address than sea level.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to question three. And Liza Welsh, you'll be the first one to respond to this question. The question is, what programs could the council implement to ensure all people, especially people of color, are treated with equity and inclusion in Eureka?
Thank you for that. I think that, you know, we need to start out by acknowledging that this is occupied weatland. So first and foremost. Secondly, we need an independent civilian oversight commission for the police. I do not think that the police should be policing themselves. There should be some intervention there from the community to hold them accountable. And this commission should include members of the communities who are most affected by interactions with law enforcement and most affected by, frankly, the racial injustice and the ongoing brutality that we're facing in this country. We need to come to terms with our history and show up for people. It's time.
Thank you. Eddie Morgan, your comments, please.
Well, I've been on the Human Rights Commission for over two years, which started in 1964, and it's worked diligently to work on racism and the things that cause people not to be integrated. I think the commercial that Sabina has put together about racism and how that affects people, that's one of our local disc jockey, is great. But I think at the end of the day, is paying attention to small details and telling true to who we are. We're a meritocracy, and we believe in people doing things right. We need to let people that are good at things to come in and help people move forward. So I think the way we solve that problem is by the day-to-day work and making sure that we don't discriminate, that we encourage people to go, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or whatever the other, all the other issues. So help people move forward, and I think that would be benefit for all of us if we are an integrated and diverse community and work together.
Thank you.
Anne, Anne, I think we missed Mr. Tuttle.
On the last one?
I think so. I'm not positive.
Is that... I'm sorry, Mr. Tuttle, William, did we miss you on that last one?
Yes, you did.
Oh, I am so sorry. Do you want to go back and do that right now, or you want to do that after we get done with this round? Thank you, Becky, for pointing that out. I'm really sorry. What would you like?
As far as the rise, it's happening, it will happen, and I've seen a lot of the maps of what they do. I'm not real familiar with the science behind it, but I know that when the ice goes away, the water's got to go up. Humboldt County has a lot of wetlands and swamp lands, and being near the water, the outside on the beaches aren't going to be the problem. Inside the bay will be a problem, and that we are on the bay, we're going to have to work up on the levees and strengthen them up to make sure they don't get washed away. But like I say, I'm not a real scientist on that matter, but it is something I've noticed and looked at. So it is something that we need to keep in the background of our mind because it could become a real problem. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I humbly apologize. Please, candidates, if I miss you, speak up, okay? Everybody gets their time here, and I'm really sorry I made that mistake. And thank you, Becky, for pointing it out. Okay, I won't do it again. We're going to get it right this time. Okay, next. The question having to do with programs to ensure all people, especially people of color, are treated with equity and inclusion. And Lucinda Jackson, we'd love your comments, please.
I'd like to start by saying that our United States Constitution and the Declaration of Independence affords every person in the United States protections under the Constitution. And the Declaration affirms, it doesn't provide, it affirms that every person in the United States has certain inalienable rights. They are not given by our government, they are protected and preserved by our government. So if there are incidences or situations in our community that need to be addressed, we as a community need to come together, whether that be a citizen group, whether that be a stakeholder group with city, county, and citizens, which I think is the most beneficial, and start to look at those hard truths of what is our community facing? What are the real issues there? Are they isolated incidents? Are they systemic incidents? And actually look at them for what they are and address them directly and appropriately.
Thank you. William Tuttle, your comments, please.
I believe that there are rules and regulations for everything, but it takes people talking to one another and speaking out to one another to solve the problems. In the military, I was a human relations instructor, and I would have a group of seven or eight Marines of all different nationalities and originally, and we would come together and talk. And you'd be surprised that when you got people in a group and started talking about things and actually spoke the truth, people come to realize, well, I didn't know that. I didn't understand you thought that way. I didn't understand that was your background. And I think what we've done, we've gotten so busy trying to go through our lives day-to-day, we forgot to talk to each other and look out for each other when you see something that's being done that isn't right. Not riot, but talk about it. And that's, I think, will solve a lot of problems.
Thank you. Matthew Owen, we'd like to hear your comments, please.
Sorry about that, had to get back on here. I too am in favor of a civilian oversight to law enforcement. I'd like to see something like that come out to our city, and actually, law enforcement's in favor of it also. I'd also like to see more sensitivity training to our law enforcement so that they understand when you're dealing with people of different backgrounds, colors, creeds, religions, et cetera, not everyone's the same. I'd also like our law enforcement to have a little more training with non-lethal type responses. Although, I got to tell you, in the last 10-plus years, I think our local police and sheriff's offices have done a fantastic job compared to what we're seeing around the country. I really respect the job our police chiefs doing and our Humboldt County sheriffs doing. But I do think anyone in any business could actually learn more sensitivity training just to understand what other people do go through out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Molton, your thoughts on this issue, please?
I would like to also acknowledge that we are on occupied weatland. Thank you for bringing that up. I think that oversight on the police, citizen oversight board, is a really big step. I also think removing some responsibilities from the police, like dealing with mental health emergencies, dealing with domestic violence issues and other things, can leave room for people who are trained to deal with those sorts of situations. I think that racial equity training can be incredibly beneficial and should be an ongoing conversation. It's a difficult thing to start talking about. Like, look, I'm from the South. I came from a, you know, a community of very smart, very articulate racists, and I had a lot to unlearn. And through racial equity training, I, you know, I've been able to have these sorts of conversations. We run a summer camp, run a summer camp for middle-school girls, and we claim to be a safe space, but we wanted to make sure that we were actually creating a safe space for all of the people in our community, whether they be from different socioeconomic backgrounds or different races. And I believe that racial equity training has helped us to move closer to that goal, and that any agency that is going to be dealing with the public needs to engage in something like that, and most importantly, listen to people of color. Listen to them when...
Sorry. Thank you. It's hard to stick within a minute, it really is. There's so much to say on all these questions. Scott Bauer, your comments on this issue, please?
Yeah, you know, it starts in the schools and it starts in the homes, teaching our kids about bias and about tolerance. You know, I think all of our kids should learn about implicit bias in school and probably every year so that they recognize that we all have bias, unfortunately. But the recognition of it is what changes behavior. I think from the city's perspective, I think it's important for the city to recruit outside the city for city jobs, you know? Look at hiring, recruiting in underserved communities to bring a more diverse, you know, number of people to our community, bring diversity to our community, and that can be done through hiring. I also agree that Citizen Oversight Commission for the Police is a great idea, but it really starts at home and it starts in our schools if we're going to improve things across the country.
Thank you. Dot Yeager, your thoughts on this issue, please?
About Black Lives Matter, is that the question?
The question was, what programs could the council implement to ensure all people, especially people of color, are treated with equity and inclusion in Eureka?
Okay, I totally agree with what Matt Owen said. I would say the same thing Matt says. I think we just make sure officers are trained correctly, and we have another person, for help of mental people that are here, the drug addiction, that's what's really bad here. Yeah, that's all I have to comment about that, so.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to question four. I'm looking to see if I... I don't think I forgot anybody, I hope not. Okay, question four. And the first respondent will be Dot Yeager on this one. Excuse me. Some businesses throughout Eureka have closed. How will you help local businesses recover from the COVID-19 pandemic?
That's a good question. Even though my background is in business, I understand that when all these small businesses close their business, they can't get back open, they want to close it, they want to open it, they want to close them. So it's a really tough decision that, you know, you have to make for the small businesses. So I'm not really sure how to answer that question.
Okay, thank you. Liza Welsh, we would love to hear your comments, please.
Yes. I think that we need to move from an extractive economy and to a diversified and regenerative economy. We need to help small businesses be able to compete in today's field. With COVID, that means online, digital, right? Being able to pivot. And I think that is something that the city's economic development team could work on, right? To help us, business owners, get their Facebook advertising going, get their online presence. And if they are affected by reduced traffic, foot traffic or, you know, in-person traffic, how can they pivot to maybe more of an online model? Or how can they diversify what they do in order to continue to operate, right? I don't want to see our businesses close, I want to see them flourish.
Thank you. Matthew Owen, your thoughts on this issue, please?
Something the city needs to do is work with local businesses to streamline the permitting process to make sure they can do things such as outdoor tents, canopies. I've seen some businesses move out to sidewalks, and I've seen some businesses move out to the street where they have parking or car parking right in front of their businesses. They're now moving their business out to the street. And I think the city during COVID needs to work with whatever business they can to keep them afloat and moving. COVID's not going to last forever. Sooner or later, we will have a vaccine, whether it's six weeks, six months, or two years down the road. We're going to have it, but in the meantime, we have to do everything in our power to help out our small, local businesses stay afloat. So anything they can do, streamlining permitting process, get people's businesses outside and keep their cash flow going so the businesses can be around next year, I'm going to support that 100%. Thank you.
Your ideas here, please?
As an artist and as a marketing consultant, I am a small business, and I work with many small businesses, many of them working out of homes and garages and studios all over the county. We have an incredibly eclectic and diverse local business economy. I think that the city government can always be improving small business and economic development and especially looking carefully at taxes and fees and regulations that might inadvertently give an advantage to large corporations coming into the area. Sometimes something that seems really innocuous or really beneficial can squash tiny businesses and let larger corporations or larger businesses come in and take up those market shares. When I'm really proud that Eureka and Humboldt, we love our local businesses and that that is a principle that our community really finds important. I think we can play on that and really work to build local small businesses through community engagement and making sure that we don't allow regulations to squash them.
Thank you. Scott Bauer, we'd love to hear your perspective on this issue.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I think the first thing we need to do is we need to work with our supervisors, our board of supervisors, work with the state legislature, you know? Our city council needs to do this to see how we're going to bring our businesses back, to see what kind of funding we can get, what kind of opportunities we can develop so that we can help, you know, kickstart these businesses after the pandemic passes. I also think maybe there's a solution to a tax break for small businesses. Maybe you get a year off to get things restarted because the actual jobs are more important at some point than the tax collection. I think the Economic Development Commission needs to be fired up, needs to be working around the clock. How can we help that commission within the city really push to figure out solutions, not just thinking about bringing in remote work, but working on the businesses we have? And I think they're a big part of the solution.
Thank you. William Tuttle, your thoughts on this issue, please? But you're muted, sir.
The baseline is money and people. Being a business owner, I'm telling you right now, small businesses do not have the collateral to get loans to make it through. They can't find people that want to work. I can't. Being closed four months, you can't catch up. I mean, you're talking thousands and thousands of dollars in debt to try to do it, and then people don't want to go to work. Well, I'm getting unemployment, why should I go to work? And before that, we lost so many people to the marijuana business, I couldn't find people that wanted to work six months ago. We need more workers, we need people to stay here. And to stay here, we need housing. We need all these things, and it's all interconnected. But the small business owner doesn't have the resources to go to the bank and say, "Give me $100,000 loan," because they're going to say, "Well, what are you going to use for collateral?" Me? Well, banks don't do that anymore. They don't build. I was in business 45 years, and it's gone because there's nothing I can do because there's no money. But the baseline is money and people, and that's what we got to do to recover.
Thank you. Lucinda Jackson, your thoughts on this, please?
My first comment is buy local. We need to support our communities by using our hard-earned money to sow into those businesses. If there's a shop that you love, make sure that you shop there. If you have a restaurant that you absolutely love, that's a little bistro here in town, locally run, shop there, eat there. But as far as a long-term solution, we've had a significant economic devastation. It really is, and it's not just limited to Eureka. It's countywide, it's statewide, it's nationwide. However, we have emerging industries, there's many of them, that the Workforce Development Board is monitoring over time. They're with the county. There's also economic development through the city, and they partner quite well to identify what those industries are and what trends will be developing. So I think coming to the table to find out what those trends are, how the city can be working to create jobs and create opportunity for the city to find niches that may not be there already. And then as existing businesses, I think helping them find a niche so that way they can preserve and sustain themselves.
Thank you. And Eddie Morgan, your comments on this question, please?
Well, as a business owner...
Well, as a business owner on Second Street, I also felt the pain of this of this period, and the most important thing that needs to happen is to promote local business, I know a lot of you mentioned that, and also get a clear, and not that the city has not been doing this, but have clear messages of what what's going on, how we're dealing with things, because in order to have a business, you need to have stability. That's one of the tractors, you have to have employees, you have to have capital, one of the things that the city can do, from the city, is provide a clear picture of what their plans are, what their intentions are, and make things simple for businesses, either going for licensing or different regulations, so working together with, as the city council, working with, making things simpler, reducing the administrative time that one spends taking care of administrative stuff would make local business work better, plus promoting local businesses among us and focusing people, saying if people don't shop locally, we cannot support the city. So there's a lot of things that the city can do to provide a clear picture of what can be done better.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our question five. Is how will you support expansion of broadband to the area?
I'm afraid we, you froze up on this there, and
I did?
Yeah, we don't know who you asked.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so Matthew Owen is our first respondent, so sorry, and I hope my face didn't freeze looking really weird. Okay, how will you support expansion of broadband to the area? And we'll start with Matthew Owen.
We already have dual-line broadband here, which is something we desperately needed. I believe they took care of this about four years ago. So both AT&amp;T and Suddenlink have broadband lines in and out of Humboldt County. I know in the past we only had one, now we have two. Not sure we need additional ones beyond that, but I think if anything, we should be talking about expanding Wi-Fi. The city of Eureka has put Wi-Fi throughout downtown and, excuse me, throughout Old Town, and I think we can use it at many more places. You can go to the Humboldt County Library and get free Wi-Fi. Old Town is pretty much open for Wi-Fi, but I think we should do that through other parts of town like downtown and Henderson Center also. So I'd like to see expansion of Wi-Fi happen here in the city of Eureka. Thank you.
Thank you. William Tuttle, what are your thoughts on this issue, please? Unmute yourself, sir. We can't, yeah, unmute yourself.
I understand we need more of it, because that's the way it is today. Everything we do is is done over the internet, and we need to expand Wi-Fi and and the broadband, so more people, the people up in Willacreek, they they don't get it. I mean, I can imagine what it's like trying to live up there. As the trouble I had tonight, just trying to get onto this this website here. I'm not a real technical type person, I got a 22-year-old kid that helps me get my stuff done. But I know that we need it, it's needed badly, because that's the wave of the future, and people need to get it to order food, to buy things off Amazon, or even just to make a reservation at a restaurant. So it is something that we need to look into and and ensure that we're doing the best we can to provide what's necessary for the people of Eureka. Thank you.
Thank you. Dot Yeager, your thoughts on this issue, please?
I agree with Matt, we have AT&amp;T, Suddenlink, we need more Wi-Fi down in Old Town, in Henderson Center, we just need more Wi-Fi. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Liza Welsh, your thoughts, please?
Yeah, this is an issue that I am really excited about. I know that the council has been looking at the idea of launching a municipal broadband program, and I am all for that, I think it's technologically possible, I don't think it would be that expensive, it's been tested before in places like San Francisco, where the Internet Archive provides municipal Wi-Fi. We even have a micro example here in Eureka with the free access point that NextGen Eureka set up at the Clark Plaza. As as time goes on, during COVID and going forward, access to the internet is only going to be more important. And I think that especially right now, when we have so many students participating in distance learning, these students need a connection that's going to be safe, reliable, affordable, and secure, right? Because otherwise, they could fall behind, and I don't want to see that happen.
Thank you. Eddie Morgan, your thoughts on this, please?
Talk about social equity. I think Wi-Fi and internet services are a basic, important thing to make that happen, and strongly believe in having a strong, robust system, and if we want future generations to succeed, we need to have it. Be it having the Wi-Fi, the municipal, and having families with students and kids that don't have Wi-Fi, having it, I think that is an investment in the future. Also, there's the the program of having a line coming from the from the Far East, I call it the Connie Stewart Program. And that is a possibility. So what we as the as the city council can do is make things simpler for those organizations to provide those services, at the same time, making sure that we don't become an extractive industry, that people take advantage of us. But making the rules, the things clear, what needs to be done to move forward, but making sure that it's in our benefit.
Lucinda Jackson, your thoughts, please?
Connectivity is an issue across Humboldt County, but living in Eureka, I've seen directly just how impactful it is throughout all of Eureka, there's definite areas that have dead spots. What I would really like to see is our community take a hard look at the benefit of fiber optic versus cable internet. Both have their benefits and both have have their downsides, but if we can take a look at what the cost benefit is to both of those, and find the match for Eureka specifically, and maybe even partner with the county to create a more robust and more sustainable system, I think that would be a wonderful goal and solution.
Thank you. Katie Molten, your thoughts, please, on this?
I too support municipal, the municipal broadband program, the idea of equitable access to the internet, to information, to the window to the world, to a real voice with which to talk and to tell your stories, as well as public Wi-Fi, it's a matter of equity, it's a matter of education. I think just like Eureka City Schools decided that the right thing to do was to give all of the kids food every day, no matter how much money their parents make, we're going to soon discover that the right thing to do is to give everyone access to that communication across the entire world. I know there's ideas of a trans-Pacific landing site coming into Samoa, and that that is super complicated. If that is something that ends up happening, I would want to make sure that the city of Eureka specifically benefits from being that landing site and from distributing that access because of the 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 strain that that would put onto our infrastructure and the the space that would require. So I'd want to make sure something like that. Basically, if they run that through here, then everybody should get free internet off of that entirely. And if we can't make it happen that way, we should be able to make it happen another way.
Thank you. And Scott Bauer, your comments on this, please?
You know, yeah, we have that, we have the capacity, we have, you know, plenty of broadband lines, but it really comes down to what everybody's been saying. Having access, you know, having, you know, if it's got to be free, but there are kids out there that are still having problems doing schoolwork remotely because they can't afford, you know, access, they can't afford Suddenlink. You know, so we need to expand our Wi-Fi in the city, we need to, you know, give it to kids for free, we need to run broadband lines and and pay for it if families can't afford it, because anybody that can't participate in this, in this, you know, environment, electronic age, they're going to be left out, and they're not going to have the opportunity, the opportunities that the rest of us have, so we should provide it if people need it, fully supportive of, let's have it free across the city.
Thank you. Right, we will move on to the next question, and William Tuttle, you'll be our first respondent. So our next question, what is your position on the current situation regarding the needle exchange program in the city? So William, William Tuttle, your thoughts, please?
Well, I know you have to do something to help the people, but from what I have read, since I don't know personally, that it wasn't done exactly the way it should be done, one-for-one and whatever. I don't like helping because I figure that that's doing nothing more than than supporting the habit, but that being said, you also have to do something to help those people. There has to be a program in place where they can get help, that we can do something to solve the problem. You're not going to help everybody, but if you help one out of 100, it's worth it to do something to have a program in place to where they can get off the drugs and go to a safe place and have people who will honestly and helpful when when they actually go there to get help. We've got to do something, and and the the answer, I'm not really sure, but giving the needle exchange, it wasn't working the way it was supposed to.
Thank you. Katie Molten, your thoughts on this question?
Worked for many years in a harm reduction-based program and still use those principles in my work with youth and with the community. I believe wholeheartedly that harm reduction works. If you can't talk to somebody like a human being and treat their basic needs and prevent them from contracting a preventable disease, then they won't survive to get help, they won't survive to get clean. People without clean needles don't stop using drugs, they use dirty needles. And they spread HIV and Hep C and other drug-related illnesses throughout our county, they put unnecessary burden on our medical system, they create whole families that end up on welfare, they remove breadwinners from families, that causes more and more problems. Harm reduction works, we need a needle exchange. Was Hatcher doing everything exactly the way that it needed to happen? I don't know, that's a complicated problem, but we have to have something, and it might take several tries, whether that's a mobile version of a needle exchange or some other version of something like that. We have to come up with something so that people can survive long enough to get clean.
Thank you. Lucinda Jackson, your response to this, please?
I do not support the needle exchange program. I've seen firsthand the devastation caused to our area by needles all over the place, littered like garbage on the streets, on sidewalks, and protected lands. It has not been a well-executed program. I think that rather than enable people to have their addiction, rather than enable people to kill themselves through that addiction, I think we need to partner with existing organizations such as New Directions, the Eureka Rescue Mission, Redwood Teen Challenge, to help people get into programs that will help to address the issues that is causing the addiction. Rather than just giving them a drug or giving them the ability to use the drug, we need to help them find real solutions to what drove them to that to begin with, and we need to give them real help, so they can begin to work to heal themselves mind, body, and spirit, and become a functioning and active part of our community once again.
Thank you. Scott Bauer, your response, please, to this?
We need to have a needle exchange program. People are going to use, and it's a healthy choice for the community to not have hepatitis C and B and all these other, you know, things that go along with dirty needle use. It has to happen, it needs to be a one-for-one exchange. It should be, and I I'm all in favor of a mobile distribution, you know, we go to them and and we're there for people with other services, you know, here's opportunities to to get clean, to address mental health, you know, we really need to work with with people that are that are using and help them, they're they're not doing it because they think it's fun, they're doing it because they have, you know, trauma in their lives, in their in their childhood, and it's our duty to try and help people whenever we can. And needle exchange is important for that, thank you.
Thank you. Dot Yeager, your thoughts on this issue, please?
Well, it's a very valuable service, but it's not being run responsibly right now. I think we need to find somebody else that can do it, and it's a viable service, I think we need to do it.
Thank you. Liza Welsh, your your perspective, please?
The data shows that harm reduction works. It works to protect the public health, to prevent the spread of blood-borne pathogens, and to provide a point of contact between people who are using drugs and social services that, you know, could be able to help them. Furthermore, you know, we we need to end the war on drugs, we need to understand that the war on drugs is a war on poverty, and that around the US, it's primarily been a war that's targeted black, brown, and indigenous people. However, I think that the provider of a harm reduction service should, there should be transparency, there should be accountability. It did trouble me to hear that Hatcher was missing their quarterly reports and other opportunities to engage with the city. So at this point, you know, perhaps we need a new provider, perhaps we need to look at moving this out of residential areas and a mobile option. Thank you.
Thank you. Eddie Morgan, your your ideas on this issue, please?
So going last on this one is tough, this is a very hard subject, and listening to the four-hour city council meeting that they had about this issue was also very long. I believe in the science, I believe in harm reduction, and I know it can be counterintuitive to give needles to people, but it'd be the same thing as not giving showers to people. This is a harm reduction, hygiene counts, and whatever we can do to isolate issues, so we can actually take care of the targeted problem benefits everybody. So I believe in harm reduction, I do believe that Hatcher did not write the reports, and that's not good. I know if I were a city council and I didn't get a report for a certain group, that would definitely rise a red flag, and that's part of being transparent. And in order to have good governance, you have to have transparency, so I think that's where Hatcher or whatever organization works, but at the end of the day, I support harm reduction, and I think it's something that does work, and it's proven in other countries, too.
Thank you. And Matthew Owen, your comments on this issue, please?
I'm in favor of harm reduction for two simple reasons. One, it saves lives, two, it saves money. I've actually spoken to the new executive director of Hatcher, and she said, whatever problems are in the past, they're going to make sure they have increased security out there, no one should be selling drugs at Hatcher. They do only offer a one-for-one needle exchange, they will also go out in the community and pick up used needles, so if you call your business who says, I've got used needles in my area, they will come pick them up for you. But I happened to be on a Zoom call last night with some local medical professionals, and said, while you may not like Hatcher, it saves money because these people, if they don't have clean needles, will get infected, get into the hospital, and then you and I are ultimately going to pay for that down the road. So regardless of your feeling on drugs, and I'm 100% against drugs, to tell an addict, don't use, is not going to work. So we need to support them so they can hopefully get help and come off it, but in the meantime, we want to make sure they live and society doesn't get burdened by an excess medical cost. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to question seven, or to the, pardon me, to the next question, doesn't matter the number. And Lucinda Jackson, you will be our first respondent. This question is, do you have a plan and a schedule for funding and repairing some of our badly degraded streets?
Infrastructure is a very serious issue for Eureka. I think that it would be easy to say, oh, we need to fix this and we need to fix that, but I think that we have an older infrastructure setup with plumbing, with electricity, with the roads. I think at this point, what we need to do is look at the totality of what we have and what we really need, and work together as a community to come up with the funding to support a sustainable infrastructure, and to look at how we're going to maintain that over time without just continuing to build on taxes. Taxes are great for a temporary solution, they are not a permanent solution, so we need to look at how can we address the lighting issues, how can we address the traffic issues, how can we address the roadways, how can we address the plumbing issues, and actually come up with viable, sustainable solutions?
Thank you. Next, Scott Bauer, your comments on this issue, please?
Well, you know, we've got millions and millions of dollars in road repairs to do across the city, it's a fact. Million dollars per mile to repave a road. It's a fact. Million dollars per mile to repave a road. Um, we need, we need Measure H. We need funding to do road work. We don't have it. Um, it's not going to fix itself, so I'll I'll say it. I'm I'm in support of of Measure H because I know it'll help us get some of our roads fixed. Um, you know, it it's been a situation that's been grinding on our psyches and our on our vehicles um for a long time. And I I hope we can get the funding. Um, it would be great to have more Measures Z funding too. I think we only get 10% of Measures Z funds that we, from the amount we bring in to the city, we get 10%. We should have some more of that Measures Z funding to help pay for our roads and maybe build some new trails as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Eddie Morgan, your comments, please?
Well, I, well, the most, uh, a big majority of the budget goes for for roads and that's a very important issue. I too support Measure H and I also support that we have a continuous uh road, uh that we fix the roads on a continuous basis because if we go through this drought and famine and the uh cycle that makes the roads worse, uh, we need to have a steady linear uh way we approach fixing the roads. Uh, and we need to have our priority and we need to have a clear list of which roads we're going to fix and 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 provide that to the public. And that is kind of already done it, but it's not as transparent. I think if we all had a better understanding of which roads are being fixed and what's the reasoning, we'd have more cooperation and Measure H and people uh being behind it would be better. And uh, it's a problem that we're going to have for a long time. As long as we have roads, we need to fix the roads. And if we don't fix them, it's going to be bad for all of us in the long run.
Thank you. William Tuttle, your thoughts on this issue, please?
The budget we have uh for the city, but I do know roads are expensive. I think part of the problem we're running into is we do the quick fix. It's the old thing. I don't have time to do it right today, but I'll come back later and do it right tomorrow. Well, doing it twice is just twice as expensive. Picking out and making a a priority list of of the streets and what needs to be done and coming up and figuring out what is the best use of the money. Yes, we do need more money. Uh, I don't know if the voters would be willing to uh to put more money in, even though they know we need the roads fixed. But you need a priority and you need to go out and you need to fix them the first time so that when it rains, it doesn't just pop out and go right back again. And then we got to go fix it again. So if we do it and do it right and 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 go the priority route and pick the streets, because there's some streets around here that are horrible, that we need to do that. But it is a problem that we've got to do and we got to come up with a plan or it's just going to keep getting worse and cost more money in the end.
Thank you. Matthew Owens, pardon me, Matthew Owen, your response, please?
Um, first off, let's say I'm in favor of Measure H. Uh, if if we don't get Measure H passed, which is a one and a quarter percent sales tax, we're looking at a 20% cut in city budgets. That's not just personnel, but that's going to be roads, sewers, water, parks, everything. Uh, because the city's losing that one and a half percent tax this December 31st. So first off is please vote Measure H. Uh, second thing is I'd like to say that two years ago, we had Measure I on the ballot. I know because I helped out one of the unions in designing some of the marketing for it, where I literally took my cameraman and grabbed his seat or grabbed his belt as he hung out the side of the window and we filmed potholes up and down Eureka and it was just, it was comical in a few hours, how many horrible potholes there are. It's not cheap to film. Like I said, you could do a quick fix and they pop up in the rain or we need to repave, which costs money. And the only way we're going to get money is we pass Measure H. So please vote yes on Measure H. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Moulton, your response to this, please?
Well, not to echo my contemporaries, but I also support Measure H. Not only will it add funds to the copper that would allow for road maintenance, but the fact that it doesn't have an expiration date would allow the city to plan more further into the future to do those correct, right kind of job fixes instead of the short fixes. And Measure H would allow us to pay back uh CalPERS debt that the city is sitting under, which would ultimately save the city millions of dollars in the long run if we can pay off that debt much more quickly, which would then free up that funds to do things like road maintenance. Uh, I also believe that we should pass um Prop 15 while we're at it because the way that we assess property taxes is kind of backwards, I think. And then that money too would go towards helping to maintain our crumbling local infrastructure.
Thank you. Dot Yeager, your perspective is wanted, please?
Well, I also agree um to um pass Measure H because it will help fix the roads. Um, and you know, I I was thinking that, you know, the road between Wincow on Henderson and Harris was really bad. I mean, huge potholes. And then now all of a sudden they're, but they've been fixed. But I was going to ask Wincow if they would agree to pay for the road and Pearson's. And maybe that's what we should be doing is asking the public to help us pay for the roads. Just my thought.
And Liza Welsh, your thoughts on this, please?
Yes, Measure H, yes, Prop 15, and the and is that we shouldn't just be fixing potholes and maintaining things as they are. We need to improve our infrastructure to address the challenges of the future. So not just cars, we need to look at bike lanes. We need to look at um expanding and investing in our transit system. We need to look at charging for electric vehicles. And by the way, that would include electric scooters and bicycles. I think that improving our infrastructure can be part of our solution on multiple levels um in terms of jobs, in terms of climate resilience. We need to do it, but it needs to go beyond cars.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next question. Um, this is a bit of a segue. Uh, please comment. Oh, we'll start with Scott Bauer. You'll be the first respondent on this one. Please comment on California Proposition 15. So Scott Bauer, we'll start with you on that.
All right, can you repeat that? You were breaking up all over.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Certainly. Please comment on California Proposition 15, the Schools and Community First Initiative.
Yeah, um, we need that. Um, you know, we've uh had a lot. Our schools are perpetually underfunded and um our communities as well. And you know, this this proposition will will help alleviate that. It's billions of dollars in funding and people don't like paying taxes and and understood, you know. But I often tell people I've been talking to, you know, across the the ward, um, that there's no help coming from the federal government, you know. There's, the state's not doing that well either. So we need funding if we want to have a community that is vibrant and and effective and um can pay its way through, you know, through infrastructure and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Liza Welsh, your comments, please?
Yes, I support Prop 15. I do not believe that the protections that were designed um to help seniors stay in their homes by capping um property tax at the assessed value at a time of sale should be extended to things like Walmart or big tech campuses or strip malls, you know. I think that the uh the property tax should be split, the protections for residences maintained, and these um big commercial properties should be taxed at the the current assessed value. We need this money for our schools. We need it for our communities. We have been without it for so long. It's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucinda Jackson, your thoughts, please?
I do not support Prop 15. Hidden behind Prop 15 is undoing much of Proposition 13 that protects grandfathering in when you pass property from one generation to the next and keep it within a family. It also has hidden costs for the average citizen with um properties less than $3 million and will end up costing them quite a bit more in the long run. We're going to see a huge increase in homelessness because people can't afford their property taxes and are going to have to sell their homes. I think there's many other detrimenting factors to this proposition and as is, I cannot support it. However, if it was reworked to where it was not causing a detriment to most citizens here in Eureka, because not many of us make more than $3 million, then I might consider it.
Thank you. Uh, Katie Moulton, your thoughts on this, please?
I'm a little confused. I thought that Prop 15 did separate the way that assessed uh property taxes were assessed between residences and between commercial properties.
And can I, can we make a correction there? That is correct. It is uh Prop uh 15 does not tax any residential property at all, either rentals or homeowners. And in commercial properties that are under 3 million are not impacted by this proposition either. I'd just like to make that correction, please?
Thank you very much. I I believe yes on 15. It doesn't affect low uh small homeowners, you know, working families like mine. It doesn't affect small businesses. It doesn't affect seniors. It affects big businesses making big money off of properties and those big businesses need to be paying their fair share. They uh don't exist in a vacuum. They exist in a community with law enforcement and roads to take care of and a workforce that is educated by the city, by the um by the schools that are here. And those things need to be paid for. If they are making money off of that property, they need to be paying in the fair share. So I agree, uh, yes, on Prop 15. This has been the electrified third rail in California politics for far too long. Property owners need to be paying taxes on what their properties are worth when they are making money off of that property.
Thank you. Eddie Morgan, your thoughts on this, please?
I I I agree with a lot of the things that a lot of us, a lot of my fellow candidates said. I, yes, on 15, uh, I believe that we've been getting a lot of breaks for for very large businesses over $3 million. And look at all the uh professionals that we take from other countries and we have a brain drain on other countries. At one point, those countries that are providing free education for their students not are not going to send their students to come here and be our doctors and mechanics and engineers. Uh, so we need to educate our own population uh and we need to invest in the future. So I think this is not going to hurt seniors. I think it's going to hurt uh small businesses and people uh that are my neighbors. And so, yes, I totally support it. And if we don't support our schools, we're just cheating the next generation.
Thank you. Ma'am, your thoughts on this, please?
Can you call my name there? Sorry, your your voice stuttered there for a sec.
Oh, yes. Matthew Owen, please. Thank you.
Thank you. It was 1978 when we passed Proposition 13. It was supposed to keep property taxes in place primarily for the elderly as California property values were increasing for residential properties. Unfortunately, lobbyists got involved and included commercial properties and industrial properties in Prop 13. So since 1978, they've been getting a tax break, paying the tax rate off the date of purchase, not the current market value. Prop 15 would increase only commercial and industrial properties, bringing them up to market rates for property taxes and will exclude agriculture. No one's residential property tax will increase under Prop 15. So it's definitely, I'm voting yes on this and I hope the majority of people out there do also. Thank you.
Thank you. William Tuttle, your response to this question, please? Oh, unmute, please? And can you unmute, please? Unmute. Oh, all right.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I I I have not had a chance to do an in-depth study on Prop 15. I'm a homeowner and I I don't mind paying taxes for schools and things. I think it's the most important thing we can do for our children and for our nation is educate our young people. Yes, I think I I do uh like a lot of uh free education, even in some colleges. I think it's gotten too expensive, but I think we need to revamp our education system. I think that they've gone so far afield from teaching the basics, A, B, C's, that the kids aren't getting the education that they need. But I know that we need to upgrade our schools uh to to make sure that they don't leak, that the kids can go to school. I know they need computers. Uh, they need to learn that. That's the way of the world. Uh, we need to work on our uh school systems and I will be checking out Prop 15 to ensure whether to see if I can support it or not.
Thank you. And Dot Yeager, your perspective, please?
Um, I am for Prop 15 because it's not going to hurt me as a homeowner or people in Eureka because none of like, um, people said, we don't make $3 million here. So it should be no problem for any of us, but um, and I do believe our schools need a lot of help. That's about it.
Thank you. All right. Our next question, we will begin with Liza Welsh. Um, that question is, what is your viewpoint on ranked choice voting?
Yes, I support ranked choice voting. I think it's a sound democracy and it has the potential to save money by avoiding costly runoff elections. It allows people to rank their their preferred candidates, uh, which can prevent uh something like vote splitting, which I know is of a concern to many of us. Uh, we we don't want to see a vote split between, say, two progressive candidates and uh then, you know, the race goes to to someone who doesn't hold those values. So yes, on Measure C.
Thank you. Uh, Katie Moulton, your thoughts, please?
Uh, yes, on Measure C. I absolutely support ranked choice voting. Um, there's a problem with first past the post voting system. Statistically, in practice, the way it works, it will inevitably drive us into a two-party system. It will inevitably force us into a a red team and a blue team, and that is not a service to democracy. Most people are, you know, falling out somewhere in the middle here and ranked choice voting allows us to um to choose representatives that have nuanced arguments. As opposed to picking the candidate we think is going to win and playing the game and playing the system, we can actually pick candidates that we agree with on principle. I'd say absolutely yes on Measure C, yes on ranked choice voting.
Thank you. Dot Yeager, your
You're breaking up.
I'm sorry. So Dot, your response here?
Um, I don't know that much about it, but from what I'm hearing from everybody, it sounds like a pretty um good measure, so I I would be for Measure C.
Thank you. William Tuttle, your response, please? Oh, unmute yourself. Unmute yourself, please?
Oh, I'm not sure how this measure is supposed to work. I haven't quite figured it out yet. Uh, I would like to look into it a lot more. Uh, it would save a lot of money by doing able to do it, but at the same time, I'm not sure if it would provide the the platform for electing the people that that should be elected. I I don't know. I'm not sure exactly how it would work by ranking the the people that you want to vote for. I would have to reserve some judgment on that and look into it further.
Thank you. Eddie Morgan, your thoughts on this, please?
I support Measure C. The United States Army has been doing the ranked choice voting or a a decision-making process for a long time. The Dutch have used it. Uh, Maine, right now is using it for its presidential uh election. So it's 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 a good system and it's a good process and decision-making process. So I support it 100% and I think it will make us less divisive. So I support it. That's it.
Thank you. Matthew Owen, your thoughts on this, please?
Well, someone mentioned earlier the uh red team and blue team and I'd like to say that is the United States of America today. And I know because I'm called Matthew in the middle, so I'm the guy who's kind of going down in between the two teams. I'm against Measure uh C, the ranked choice voting, for a simple thing. There's five candidates running in the fourth ward. At the end of the night or 30 days later, depends upon how long it takes to tally up the votes. I'm assuming the candidate who has the most votes hopes they actually win the election. Because if one of us got the most votes, but they suddenly say, you didn't win the election, we'd all be scratching our heads. So I firmly believe in one person, one vote, and whoever gets the most votes at the end of the day wins the election. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Bauer, your thoughts on this, please?
Let me unmute here. Um, yeah, earlier we talked about diversity and um and inclusiveness and our political system is probably the least diverse in the world. You know, it, the issues aren't black and white. Politics aren't black or white or blue or red. You know, the issues aren't black and white. Politics aren't black or white or blue or red. It's about having a choice, and ranked choice voting would open up the system to a array of voices and give us more opportunity to choose. You know, we can actually look at, maybe we actually are more green than we think we are, and the candidate, you know, holding our nose and voting for the least worst is gotta go away. And I think ranked choice voting should be instituted nationwide, and I fully support Measure C. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucinda Jackson, your thoughts on this, please?
I think it's easy to give an answer yes or no for ranked choice voting. I think that the way that it impacts a nonpartisan race is different than the way that it would impact a partisan race. So for myself, seeing both behind the scenes in the elections office and seeing how it plays out in the political sphere, I would say I, at this time, am not a fan of the ranked choice voting. I think that each of us should have one vote. And then if those votes are so close to where a runoff or a recount is necessary, I think we owe it to our citizens to do that.
Thank you. Alright, for our next question, we'll begin with Matthew Owen. Eureka is considered by many people relocating here will put a strain on housing. What are your ideas to address this challenge?
Can you repeat the first part of your question? You kind of got
I will indeed. So sorry. Eureka is considered by many to be a climate change refuge location. People relocating here will put a strain on housing. What are your ideas to address this challenge?
Well, first off, I like to say that we probably have some of the cleanest climate out there. Our Humboldt Bay, I believe 70% of the oysters from the state of California come out of our Humboldt Bay. I say to my friends down in LA, I lived there for years. I do not miss the smog there. I don't miss the traffic there. So climate change refuge, I'm not sure how to get that. Because on the other hand, we're going to look at and say, we need more housing for people already here, let alone the people moving here. One thing we're going to find with COVID, too. A lot of people are sick and tired of the big cities, the crowds and the traffic, and they're saying, let's get the heck out. And they're looking for smaller communities to go to. We're getting a lot of people coming. I'm in the real estate industry, and we have a lot of people moving up here from the big cities, just saying, I'm done with the crowds. Get me out, get me out of there. So we're going to be seeing more and more people coming up here to Humboldt County. So I'm going to go back to my thing, my original thing I said, we just need more housing for the average person here in Eureka. Thank you.
Thank you. Eddie Morgan, your thoughts on this, please?
Well, this is, it's a very difficult question. And we want to avoid sprawl. But on the other hand, this is an opportunity to benefit our community if we have people moving in from other areas. So I think we need to have slow planned development to go make decisions slowly and decisively and clearly. And we need to fill in the housing to avoid sprawl. That's, I think that's where we want to go. And talk about equity and things like that. Who is moving up here? And is that, do we need to put that out of the decision-making process? And I'm thinking of other countries that I've been and how they've handled where populations from abroad have pushed out the locals. That has happened, and I don't really have a good answer. I'd have to study it some more. So I see benefits in it, but I also see there being that extractive economy and people here locally being taken advantage. So I'd have to think about it some more.
Thank you. Katie Molton, your thoughts on this, please?
We are already seeing climate change refugees here. The last big round of wildfires saw an influx of people moving into Eureka because they wanted to live somewhere a little more damp. And we're likely to see that again. There's going to be people who want to come here and move here, like I did, which isn't necessarily a bad thing. These can be really great benefits to our community. The city can be relieving the strain on the housing market by looking at zoning, clearing the way for more multifamily units and low-income housing, as well as better public transportation, which is going to allow people to live in further out areas and in the different cities and find jobs in the different cities all up and down the coast. Also, I believe that passing Prop 15 will create a deterrent for leaving houses and leaving viable properties sitting empty because it's not costing any money. If you have a house that's sitting empty and it's costing you more and more money because it's worth more and more money, then you need to be doing something with it, and it's going to open up more housing in the city and more opportunities for people to find that kind of housing.
Thank you. Dot, your thoughts on this question, please?
Can I have you ask it again? I forgot what the question was.
No problem. Eureka is considered by many to be a climate change refuge location. People relocating here will put a strain on housing. What are your ideas to address this challenge?
Well, I agree with everybody, what everybody said. We need more low-income housing and more low-income senior housing. I went out to the place out next to Myrtle Avenue Market, and they want $1,400 from a senior for a two-bedroom apartment. 1,400 bucks. That's just unreal. So I think we need more housing, more low-income, housing, more low-income for the seniors.
Thank you. Your thoughts on this, please?
Currently, right now, our housing inventory was recently redone, or inventoried in 2019 through the housing element. And it showed that in most categories that we had sufficient housing inventory, except in the lowest income levels. One of the problems I think we're seeing with that is zoning. For example, in Old Town, you have many shops where there's apartments above and there's shops below. We're running into situations where depending on the zoning, people can't utilize those buildings, so they're going vacant. So we have a lot of blight caused by that. If we could address the zoning, that could be a solution for that. As far as being a refuge, what I would hope that Eureka could strive towards is being a refuge in the sense of they would want to come here in vacation and bring their money here, but they would not want to come buy up properties at very high rates because they're discounted to their bigger city urban prices and then drive the rents up and actually hurting Eureka more.
Thank you. Liza Welsh, your thoughts on this, please?
Yeah, I saw this even just on a micro scale this past weekend when we had refugees who'd evacuated from the fires in Trinity County, staying at our home. And although they've left now, and thankfully their home did not burn, I think that this is something that's already happening. Eureka is a place that people are coming, whether to move here or just to temporarily have a respite here. And we need to accept that. We need to welcome them. We need to acknowledge that they've probably experienced significant trauma. You know, and that this wonderful community can be a place of healing. We've already discussed a lot of ideas about building housing and I, yes, infill housing. I think that Eureka's recent zoning code updates do a lot to increase density and to encourage the development of secondary dwelling units. We're on the right track, but we need to keep going.
Thank you. Scott Bauer, your perspective, please?
You know, the climate refugees are coming, and this year will be even more, given the fires that we were having. I think the solution is to build up and not out, you know, not to sprawl out to the hinterlands of the city. Someone earlier had talked about, you know, that the city has a lot of vacant lots. I see buildings on the bottom, housing on the top. And that can be something, you know, of course, there's zoning issues and all those things, but that's our solution to increasing our population, allowing for refugees, bringing them into the city is build up, not out. But I also think it's a regional issue. People want to come to Humboldt County because the whole county is a climate refuge. So I think the city and all the cities within Humboldt County, Fortuna, Eureka, Arcata, need to come together and start planning for this and looking to areas where we could bring housing in within Humboldt County and not just focused on the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And William Tuttle, your thoughts on this, please? Unmute.
Yeah.
Please?
The thing about it is, we don't have to worry about just the climate people, but people are going to be changing the way they work. They don't go to, they're not going to be going into those big high-rises in San Francisco anymore to go to work, and they can move to the rural countries and do their jobs and live a better life. But our problem is, we don't have a lot of land out there. We have a lot of wetlands and things, and some of the land has been bought up by the nonprofits and things so that we cannot do urban sprawl. Nobody wants urban sprawl where we live in the city. But we do have to come up with a plan, as they said, work with the other cities and the county and say, well, where can we put some apartments? Where can we put these houses? And the problem going to be is, these people come out of San Francisco or Sacramento and sell a house for $1 million. All of a sudden, that $250,000 house becomes worth $500,000. And when it goes up, the rents go up. It's just the way it is. People will sell these houses that aren't expensive for a lot of money, and all of a sudden, the payments grow up. So we have to come up with a plan that will, so we can not do urban sprawl.
Thank you. I think, given that we're nearing the end of our form, this will be our last question, and then we'll have closed statements. So for our last question, we will start with Scott Bauer. Other than the COVID-19 pandemic, what do you feel are the top three issues or challenges facing the city of Eureka?
First and foremost is the budget. You know, we have to get the budget in shape. We've got so many issues, you know, the CalPERS deficiencies, our roads, our homelessness issue. We've got to get funding. We've got to get Measure H passed, and we've got to make us whole. Second, really, you know, is transportation. And I don't just mean the roads, I mean trails. Our kids should be able to go from Cooper Gulch to Eureka High or from Myrtle Avenue to Zane to the hospital by trail, so they get off the roads and can get to school safely, and people can recreate in a safe, a safe place. You know, so it's really budgets, transportation, and then homelessness issue. We've got to figure that out. We've got to get more housing, got to build up, not out. And we got to provide for people that are deserving and need our help. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Owen, your perspective, please?
Okay, am I off now? Good.
Yeah, we got
All good?
Yes.
Thank you. My top three perspectives are going to be housing, number one. We need additional housing throughout the city of Eureka. I've identified lots where we can build. We need to come up plans for doing that. Two is, we need to keep working with our homeless. The city of EPD, our police department, they're not trained to deal with the homeless and the mentally ill. I'd like to see more social workers out on the streets, sort of what we're doing with what they call the CSAT and the MIST teams, bringing a lot more social workers out on the streets of Eureka. We have six times the per capita homeless population as the state of California, six times here in Eureka. Part of it's the weather, part of it's we have a lot of open lands here. So because of that, they come here. We need to do more. Homelessness is not a crime, nor should we treat it like a crime. Finally, the last thing I'd like to say is Measure H. We need to pass that because they need the city funds to build the road, to build the roads, improve the roads, the sewers, the water system, et cetera. So I'll say housing, homeless, and Measure H. Thank you.
Thank you. Eddie Morgan, your thoughts on this issue, please, or these issues?
I think if I had to put it at three, I would be sustainable, small, local businesses. We need to support them because we need to have the money in the coffers so we can support the other. The second one would be the having a physical and tech infrastructure that supports the future and does the next generation's justice. And then affordable housing, which fits in with the homeless issue and a lot of the other issues. So those are my three things. I think we should think of the future and see what we can sustain for now. And what we'd like to do and maybe what needs to be done might be a little different. But I think the important thing is to look at sustainable, small, local businesses, infrastructure and the physical tech and infrastructure and affordable housing, which really relates to the homeless people. I know a lot of the different surveys that have been done by Eddie Alexander. Homelessness is one thing that comes a lot of the tourists that come up here and people that live here, that is giving us an image that is not helping business, and we need to treat people that are homeless as human beings and taking care of them. That's it.
Thank you. Lucinda Jackson, your thoughts on this, please?
There's three primary focuses that I come before the voters with and ask to be elected to address. Those are budgeting and sustainability of Eureka. Looking, truly looking at how the budget is being allocated, aligning that with services, looking for inefficiencies. How can we use tax dollars to best serve citizens? Number two is homelessness, addiction, and mental illness. We have a problem. We have a very big problem, and solutions will not be fixed with Band-Aids. We need to look at true solutions that will be long-lasting. We need to look for programs to help people get the help that they need. We need to bring in mental health clinicians, so that way emergency responders are not the first people who are addressing emotional crises, so that way we can see a better result. We also need to look at our infrastructure. We need to take a hard look, stop putting Band-Aids on our roads, our plumbing, our electricity and other types of infrastructure. We need to come up with real solutions that will be long-lasting.
Thank you. William Tuttle, your response to this, please? Unmute.
The, first of all, it has to be small business. 70% of the businesses in the United States are small business entrepreneurs who pay the taxes, hire the people so they have jobs, and without this small business, we're going to really be hurting because the big businesses are not here. And the second is housing. I mean, we don't have the housing. I don't know how we're going to get people to build the housing. And that goes to with the homeless. And then, of course, as I said, is the budget. Are we spending our money wisely? Are we not putting it where it needs to be? Are we taking the money that comes in for something and putting it there, or are we using it somewhere else? So the budget is a very big thing, and try to make it very economical. Make it spend it where it needs to be spent and not just where we'd like to spend it.
Thank you. Thank you. Dot Yeager, your thoughts, please?
Well, I live on the west side of Eureka. So crime is a very big deal here in the west side. I think crime is our number one problem. I think police, not having enough police, is a number two problem. And then homelessness, that's our number three problem. I'm not sure what we can do about the homeless. I just don't, I don't even know, but I think crime is a big thing that we need to look at on the west side of Eureka.
Thank you. Liza Welsh, your comments, please?
Firstly, the need for jobs and sustainable and responsible economic development so that we can avoid brain drain, so that people who want to stay can have those dignified living wage, possibly union jobs. We need to look at worker ownership, things like worker-owned co-ops. And we need to look at moving away from an extractive economy and to a regenerative economy that conserves natural resources and values working people. Secondly, preparing our infrastructure for the climate and making it more resilient. And then thirdly, and this one I think is the most important, is too often I see people who do not live in Eureka on social media disparaging Eureka. It's a reputation problem, and we need to tell a new story. We, a story of why we love this city, a story about our artists, about our scrappy, resilient population. Thank you.
Thank you. And Katie Molton, your thoughts, please?
Number one, I think it's difficult to look at the global and really feel it impressing on us right away, but I think the number one problem for us here, for everyone everywhere, is man-made climate change. The sea is rising. It is happening now. California is on fire right now. We can be doing things in our practices every single day to mitigate right now. We can be doing things in our practices every single day to mitigate the effects of that, to rebuild our infrastructure, to work on our wetlands, and to make sure that we are actually a refuge, that we are actually a safe place as the world gets hotter and more dangerous and more full of displaced and disenfranchised people. Next, I think that we have a complete dearth of healthcare. Here, it is so difficult to find a doctor. It is so incredibly impossible to find a dentist, especially if you're a low income. If you are a working family that's somewhere between the, the social services and being able to actually afford healthcare, it's practically impossible to get help. We need to improve our quality of life and our livability of our city so that doctors will want to stay here. And then poverty, poverty, poverty is the cause of so many problems. Crime, homelessness, addiction, invisible problems like domestic and child abuse. And we need to be treating that with full bellies and education and affordable housing.
All right. So that, this concludes our question and answer portion of the forum. And we move into the last stage, which is the one minute closing statements from each of our candidates. So for that, we will begin our, Liza Welsh, you will be our first candidate to give a closing statement.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to attend and participate in this forum. I really enjoyed hearing what everyone had to say tonight. When I am elected, I will make data-driven, fiscally responsible, worker-friendly, and people-centered decisions. And I will lead from a place of compassion and cooperation. Please visit my website. It's www.liza4eureka.com. That four is the number four. And please check out my Facebook page as well, facebook.com/liza4eureka. At those sites, you can learn more about my campaign. You can learn how to donate, and you can learn how to volunteer and get involved. Thank you very much, and I hope everyone has a wonderful night.
Thank you. Matthew Owen, you will be our next closing statement.
Hi, I'm Matthew Owen, running for Eureka City Council, fourth ward. And once again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this unique Zoom event tonight. I've never quite done one like this before. Our city needs leadership, and I'm known as someone who gets things done, whether it's cleanup projects around town or partnering with other groups. I like getting things done. To give you an example, Brian Hall, the Eureka Rescue Mission, came to me with an ask. He needed 27 bunk beds. I reached out to the city of Eureka, a local church, a Rotary Club, and Vern's Furniture, and we purchased 27 bunk beds for him at cost after raising the funds, got all the bed sheeting donated, along with the pillows. And today, 54 homeless people are now sleeping in beds versus mats on the floor. And that's just one example. What we need to do is partner with other people around town, whether it's the county, the state, and other community groups, nonprofits, churches, and get everyone involved and make Eureka a better place. Once again, I'm Matthew Owen, and I'm asking for your vote this October. Please vote and vote early. Thank you.
Thank you. Eddie Morgan, we'll hear your closing statement now, please?
I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum and doing an excellent job with the technology that is available. So thank you. I want to thank you, my fellow candidates, for taking the time to participate in this event. Democracy does not function without people participating. And it's great to see such qualified candidates running for Ward Four and Two. I especially want to thank the people that are watching this and are going to vote on or before November 30. Please consider casting your vote for me on Ward Four of the city of Eureka. I have experience listening, analyzing, and bringing parties with varying views of, very views to consensus. Sometimes it's needed in order to have the progress that we want to have here. So with that, I give you all a good night, and thank you very much for having this event.
Scott Bauer, for your closing statement, please?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters for this forum. I, I really appreciate it, even though it's a challenging environment. Thank you for, for, for having us. I really believe in public service. I, I've dedicated my whole life to serving on, on boards and committees. I've been a scientist representative of the California Association of Professional Scientists for 12 years, serving on the board, fighting for, for labor and for scientists. And I believe in that, you know, that the city is the next logical step to, to, to bring my skills and effective leadership. I want Eureka to be a place where my kids, my two boys, want to come back and live, you know, if they go away to college. I want this to be a place that brings, gives us all pride. And I really believe in the promise of Eureka. And I'm committed to serving our community with integrity, care, and experience that matters. So please vote for me in October, when you get your ballot, and see you on the trail. Thank you.
Thank you. Will Tuttle, please?
Yes, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on the forum. This is my first time in doing such a thing as this. I'm a hardworking, dedicated person. I'm used to leadership. I'm used to solving problems. I see that a lot of problems coming ahead of us here in the next few years. I would love to be your representative in Ward Four, and I hope that you will vote for me November 3rd or earlier. And any questions that you have, please get ahold of me, and I'd be happy to talk to you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Dot Yeager, your closing statement, please?
Yeah, hi, I'm Dot Yeager Wentworth. I'm running for city council, Ward Two. I want to thank the women voters for having us this forum tonight. It's very nice. I've never done it before. The computer thing's very, very confusing to me. I got on okay. Anyway, just vote for me. I'm a hard worker. I don't count taking a salary. I don't need their health insurance. I just want to work, work, work. And that's just what, what I do. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Katie Moulton, your closing statement, please?
Thank you to League of Women Voters for helping to build an informed electorate, especially these days. It's so good to just hear the truth from people's mouths about what they actually think and to have these sort of civil conversations. As a mom and a homeowner and a small business person, I have deep roots in this neighborhood, and I want to help make Eureka a stronger place that is genuinely safe for all of the people that live here. I've worked with the kids and the youth and the young adults and the families in this neighborhood for over 15 years, and I want to make sure that they don't fall through the cracks and that the economic recovery that we are sure to enjoy takes all of us along with it and doesn't leave anyone behind. I have helped to build dozens of small arts, culture, and educational businesses in our area that elevate our economy from the grassroots up and elevate our reputation outside of this area as, as, as a hub for culture and for the arts. Please visit votekatymoulton.com. I want to use my creativity, compassion, and strength to benefit our community. I want to be your voice on the Eureka City Council.
Thank you. And Lucinda Jackson, your closing statements, please?
Good evening, voters. I thank you so much for listening to what myself and my, the other candidates have to say about these issues that are deeply concerning you. I thank you for your time. And I just want to let you know that I'm not a politician. I have never run for public office before. I'm not interested in special interest groups. I'm here because I'm committed to using my time, talent, and treasures to serve you. I ask you for your vote because we need to do something to work on our community. I'm asking you, the voters, to also consider how you can invest into our community to make a difference for our community. We need people to run for office, like myself and these candidates are doing. We also need people to get involved with volunteerism, to support local charities and organizations, get involved with local groups, because there's something each and every one of us can do to help Eureka thrive again. So thank you for your time, and I hope that you'll vote for me, Lucinda Jackson, for Eureka City Council, Ward Two.
Thank you. So this concludes our forum for tonight. Thank you to all of you candidates for your willingness to run for this very important office, for taking the time out of your obviously very busy schedules to communicate with voters in our community how you feel and to articulate your views and hopes for the future. And thank you for taking time to answer these questions that come from your voting public. Thank you to everyone who is watching. We appreciate you taking the time to get to know your candidates. And we encourage you to, number one, make sure you vote. We encourage you to vote by mail. But remember to, no matter what, get your vote in there by November 3rd. Make democracy work. Thank you so much, and good evening.